All right, let's go ahead and call to order the City Council Workshop for September 9th, 2025. Do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
Yes, sir, we have four.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, we have three. John Harrison.
Mr. Harrison. Okay, he wants to address just two. See, on a, but on a workshop, we, we have them all at once.
In the morning, or in the first.
That's okay. All right, thank you. Next.
Katie Graham.
Ms. Graham.
Hi.
I did see your, I did see your, I did see your talk from yesterday.
You know what I'm talking about tonight?
Use the big words here.
Okay. Thanks for having me. Katie Graham. Have to say my address, 542 Kelly Street. Don't do that.
Good point.
So I'm here, I want to talk about the debris. Want to talk about the mulch. And I know the positions of the state, the county and the city, but I still think that it's important to talk about it and bring it to front and center. So I've got a little letter, I'm just going to read it. So currently, under the state's cleanup contracts, the woody debris is being removed from all of our riparian areas, mulched and hauled out of the county. At least two of the contracted dump sites that we know of are commercial compost facilities in San Antonio. Both the flood damage and the state's cleanup response has been unprecedented. Never has this much organic material been removed at one time from riparian areas along the Guadalupe River. Large woody debris and mulch are critical to the health of riparian ecosystems, water quality and long-term flood resilience. And processed woody material, which is the mulch, is a valuable organic material that could be used for local restoration planting projects and regenerative agriculture operations. TIDIM, Texas Department of Emergency Management's approach to woody debris management, while welcomed financially, may be a little bit problematic. It contradicts recommendations from the Texas Forest Service and other state agencies and hauls away the organic material critical to riparian recovery. So the solution, we respectfully request that the Texas Division of Emergency Management contracts be amended to incorporate best management practices as recommended by state agencies. Texas Forest Service recommends avoiding the use of heavy machinery in the flood plains, protecting remaining vegetation and keeping woody debris in place wherever possible. A steering committee that organized in late July before KIR Together created a woody debris management resource for landowners. By following these guidelines, cleanup can continue efficiently while also supporting a natural recovery ecosystem health and the resilience of our rivers. City of Kerrville, we understand that woody debris management is a state issue and it's not a city issue. We get that. However, the city represents the people of Kerrville, as well as the natural resources that are essential to our economy and our way of life. We have communicated with project superintendents for CERES, the TIDIM section chief, disposition site managers at New Earth and Second Nature Compost in San Antonio, riparian specialists at TPWD, a forest ecologist at Texas A&amp;M Forest Service, county commissioners court, the river environmental working group under KIR Together, and landowners throughout the impacted areas. We have yet to be given a logical reason for why mulch, byproduct of riparian cleanup, cannot remain in our area. So the voice of the city carries a lot of weight at the table with the decision makers, the state decision makers. So we're asking you to please advocate on behalf of Kerrville residents for policies that better balance disaster response with long-term ecological health and recovery. We urge you to use your position to help the state follow its own recommendations and to protect the river that is the lifeblood of our community. Woody debris and mulch from our Guadalupe River watershed is not a commercial commodity. It's a natural element critical to the recovery of our way of life. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Any other speakers?
Helen Hurd.
Ms. Hurd.
Mayor, council, thank you for allowing me to speak. I have probably more of a question than a statement to make. I've been following the press, the flood and the recovery process, and I know, I'm aware of this huge, big pile of money that the community foundation has that could be used to help us as taxpayers recover from this disaster. And I know that you're selling T-shirts to raise money to repair Louise Hayes Park. That would be a charitable cause that the IRS would allow the community foundation to give to a municipality as long as that cause aligns with their projects. And they have advertised that they're in the recovery business at this point. So I don't see why with all the great minds in this chamber, that someone hasn't figured out a way to get their hands on that money instead of raising taxes to pay for it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That's the end of the citizen speakers.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is 2A, July 4th, 2025 flood event status recovery efforts. Who are we going to start with? Mr. Hornis?
You have me, sir. Mayor, council, it's good to see everybody this afternoon. So, as the speaker was alluding to, this was an unprecedented event, right? What I'll get to here in a minute is the totals as of yesterday being 955,000 cubic yards of debris. I believe the last time I was here to see you, it was 550,000 cubic yards of debris. So it's almost double at this point. I will say that 95% of that material, more than that, comes from private property, private landowners. We do have sections within the city that are our responsibility and we own all the way up to the water. Those kind of stop at the parks, right? So, Guadalupe Park, Louise Hayes Park, Kerrville Shriner Park, the River Trail itself, we have easements across, vast majority of that land is also, so I just want to kind of articulate that. So what we have, I think I showed these same photos last time, this is a side view of those trees that were salvaged. And they will look like that for a long time. Kind of been over, and that's going to be kind of the shape of Louise Hayes in that area for a little while. But those trees were healthy enough to stay, right? And so the guidance documents that were provided from the, well, Hill Country Alliance, Upper Guadalupe River Authority, COTS, I'm going to fail on the name of the organization, but the Kerr County Water Group, fall fairly closely in line with FEMA guidance, but they're not entirely in sync. So there's kind of some deviations in there. So just as a backup, if those tree root systems were pulled up, if the bark on the tree was more than 70% destroyed, if the trees were broken, there's kind of a, kind of a long list of why they would remove that tree, right? And so we had arborists from Forest Service, City of San Antonio, every kind of, anyone and everyone who wanted to come up and help, and we had a lot of them, go out and mark all those trees that they felt could stay. Those trees were questioned by the debris haulers. Why do you want to keep this? And we said, the foresters told us that these are the ones to stay, and we want to keep every single one that we possibly could. And so what you see out there is, is a product of their good work. It does look like, you know, the moon in some of those spots. And we have a lot of work to do as far as the recovery goes, and we'll get to that. We have harvested, the CERES folks have harvested a considerable amount of those trees that were felled for our use at some point later in the future. We should, at some point, talk through what council would like that to be, but I don't think that's a conversation for now, that's for whenever, that's for down the road. And those were taken from Louise Hayes Park, from Kerrville Shriner Park, and maintenance folks have those kind of stored away for future use. So yes, 955,000 cubic yards of debris has been picked up so far. The vast majority of that is going to be vegetative debris, 20% of that is going to be construction debris, and then it's going to be vehicles, it's going to be electronics, it's going to be hazardous household waste, but by and large, for the most part, it is vegetative debris and construction debris. That kind of makes up the bulk of it. So we've had this conversation many, many times about the mulch. And we've been talking about it internally, we've been talking to the state about it. Are there ways that we could do this, right? So when this all started, what was required for every single category of debris is that it had a final disposition site. So the state and FEMA require that there is going to be a final resting place for that location, whether it's construction debris at a landfill, whether it's recyclable materials going to a recycling center, right, for which they will make a profit when that debris is dropped off there because they pay by the weight. And then for the vegetative debris, we had two methods for disposition. We had the air curtain incinerators, which require 60 days of drying time, and then at that point, those, that vegetative debris can be placed in there and it's then burned, all right? And the second method, which is going on right now, is what they have where they're chipping that wood. Now it is not, when it's done with this first batch of chipping, mulch that you would see in a bag that you would buy at HEB. It is still mixed full of all kinds of other materials. So the state, TCQ, both define that as kind of dirty debris. That is not clean mulch, that is not something you want to take possession of. One of the things that came back to me was if you took this stuff right now and you started giving it away, and six months from now, from now, 12 months from now, there's a fish kill in the water, you can't say it wasn't you. I don't know that that's going to happen because it's mostly just debris. But it's still, in the eyes of TCQ, in the eyes of Emergency Management Office, who do this in conjunction with other agencies of the state, say that this isn't something you want to handle. So how do they process that? They go to a TCQ-approved company that has the ability to take that dirty debris and turn that into a mulch product that, yes, they can sell, right? They are taking that debris off of our hands so we don't have 750,000 cubic yards of it sitting around, which is what it would amount to. So that iteration takes a lot. That mulch has to be turned, it's got to be refined, it's got to be refined, it's a process, it's a business, right? And so you all, we are not in the mulching business, the county, to my understanding, is not in it as well. And so as we were getting started, final disposition sites that were TCQ-approved were selected, and that's hence why that material is going to those locations. You have any questions about that?
I do. Okay, so the contract we have with TIDIM, that my understanding that we couldn't make any changes right now, and if we did, it would all halt the actual action of removal?
There's a contract with TIDIM, so TIDIM has a contract with the contractors that are doing the debris hauling. So, and this is a, kind of a new endeavor, because typically what this looked like is the city would contract with these contractors, in this instance, the state of Texas, because of the sheer size and our, and our small size, they took on that responsibility to do that. So as an example, they, they were, usually when there's vehicles that are caught up in these kind of situations, the local entities deal with it, and we do the disposition and call, you know, the owners of it, the banks that are holding the notes, et cetera. And so we had a conversation yesterday where TIDIM had to kind of ask us, how do you, what is the disposition that, you know, how would you prefer that we do this, right? And so we had long talks about how we would prefer to have this, and, you know, we, we took their expertise, right? We were critically asking questions of how can we do this? Is there a way that we could prop this up? Well, not without becoming a TCQ-approved mulching facility, right? Which we are not. And so, so we could make changes, that yes, they will slow things down. Those, both of those things are true.
This might be a very impossible question to answer, but would you say we're 25% of the way through removal? 30%?
You know, folks threw out numbers early on, and those numbers buried, so anywhere from a million and a half cubic yards to two and a half million cubic yards. So if it's a million and a half, and we're at almost a million, right, we're two-thirds of the way there as far as getting it out of the river, getting it out of the water. If it's two and a half million cubic yards, then we're a third of the way there, right?
That was a hard question to answer. Seems like it's more, the latter is more 2 million plus.
Yeah.
Okay, that, that helps me just think about what would hap, what if we wanted to interject something at this point, where are we in the process itself?
Long way.
Okay.
Long way from being done.
Michael.
Ma'am.
One of the biggest questions I get is about our riparian buffer. What are we doing to recover that?
So the speaker and myself are on a group of long-term recovery and dealing with specifically the riparian area. So there are, KIR Together has probably, I don't know, nine different subcommittees dealing with economic development, dealing with health, and a specific subcommittee that's dealing with restoration of the riparian area. And how are we going to accomplish that goal, right? And it's, it is a monumental task because you're trying to repair wholesale devastation of the river's edge, right? And you're trying to do that amongst 95% of it being someone's private property.
Right.
Right? So, hey, you have to do this.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I don't want to. Okay, well, you don't have to do it, right? And, and it is, right, it's, so it's their private property, they can, they can do with it what they want, right? We have recommendations that are, you know, don't plant Bermuda grass, plant grasses that are native to Texas, that are going to grow 12 feet deep, right, that are going to keep your bank stable. Really good advice, right, but it's not a perfectly manicured, what my mother called a Houston yard. They look different, right? And so that group is comprised of a whole bunch of folks from Hunt all the way down to the edge of Kerr County and Comfort, near Comfort, and talking through one of the best management practices, of which this is a complicated conversation because the woody debris and the best management practice, you know, how do you balance that out, right? How do you balance out what that looks like? And so we're still formulating that plan. That plan would involve wholesale purchase of native grasses and shrubs, trees to be planted all along the river's edge, anywhere that we can, really. And how are we going to do that? I think we would do that through a public assistance project through FEMA. For any of you who have been through Bastrop in the last 15 years, know that Bastrop was a victim of a huge forest fire. Bastrop also availed themselves of a FEMA project that replanted much of that area. And so what you see there now still looks, you know, you can see that there was a fire, but I think without that project, which is a years-long project, takes quite a while, that landscape would look significantly different. So we're working towards that plan to bring both to you and to the county, trying to find the right entity to make application for that because it's, it's outside of the city.
Right.
It's, it's within the county, UGRA is countywide, makes sense for those folks to be, you know, kind of head partners in that. So a lot of logistics still left to follow.
Thank you.
All right.
What's the next part?
Okay. Oh, 955,000 cubic yards, I don't know. Next time we talk to you, it's going to be well over a million. Again, this is just from the last meeting, that dashboard, and these were just trees that we had marked that were along the river's edge, within city limits and city parks. Those foresters did a fantastic job putting that stuff together. The debris folks are continuing to ask if there's people around who want to work, there's jobs available with those guys. So if you know folks who are looking for something and they have a need, there are jobs available within, to help out with this process. And that's a place to apply for it. This is the same information we had up last time. And then most of, so there's about 850 private property debris removal, they're calling right-of-entry requests have been put in to the TIDIM folks at this point. They completed about 150 of them. I think the reason that number is low is because they've been on significantly more properties than that, but it's not closed out because they're going to have to go back or there's an issue, and so it kind of, there's a long checklist for the debris haulers for once they get onto someone's property, remove the debris that they've been asked to remove, and then closing out that process. So right now, we're at 850, I imagine that number is going to keep rising. But also the, the closeout of that will also continue to rise. So we are talking about, this is for Chief McCall and Chief Maloney, just always, they, they scale up these things and you scale, not scale them down, but you mobilize and you demobilize. So we're starting to talk through, you know, the recovery of the riparian area, the recovery of the economy, the recovery of people's mental health. We're also talking about like, when does this scale down for the debris effort? So it's weird to be starting those conversations because it seems like we just started, but it's this very up and down process of these events, so. With that, Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you for any questions.
Do you have any report on Nimitz Lake?
Yes, sir. So Ingram Lake, right now, there should be crane and dredging operate, not dredging, I don't want to say that because I don't want to get anybody, specific areas that the canines have hit, so to speak, where they also know there are large amounts of debris, are being pulled out in Ingram Lake at this point. And so that effort required them to crane out a barge or to crane out an excavator on, from a, you know, to the barge, and then to start working off that. You probably saw barge out there at Nimitz Lake, helping us clean out the water treatment plant. Once they are finished with that operation, we had a discussion the other day, and staff, we feel comfortable letting them come down and do that here, no earlier than October 1st, because it may come to pass that, because they have also another large swath of debris that they want to get out from Nimitz Lake, but it's the same contractor, so they'll work in Ingram and then they'll come down here. In an effort not to go back onto well water too early, we said we wouldn't want it to happen before October 1st, and all likelihood, it will happen in mid-October. Part of that process will also have them putting in screens kind of between where they're going to do the work and the water treatment plant, and our hope is that we won't have to go to well water. But, but this will be a much, this will be a faster process once they're in there, and so that may happen in October 15th, October-ish timeframe.
Any other questions for Mr. Hornis?
Yes.
Go ahead, please.
Michael, when does the 60 days start? Because we're on, on day 66 from the 4th of July, does it, like, comes out of the water?
It's a really good question, right? I think it becomes kind of a means and methods, right, which is preferable for the, for the, for the debris teams. So we have available to us those air curtain incinerators, and they can start working on those piles that have been here for longer than 60 days. It's a question of whether or not it's, it is beneficial for them to do that versus to chip that debris, right? So we, they could get started now, I'll talk to them about it tomorrow and get y'all an update on that.
Probably be more sensible if they had everything ready to go after 60 days to start.
It's, well, but I think the method that they have is, is working, right? So they are churning that stuff out. I don't know, that air curtain incinerator is not very big, it's about the size of that area that's kind of right between y'all and the front row, maybe a little bit wider. So it, it can handle it, but it also, how efficient is it, right? And I think that was the question, because we had both methods approved, and so.
Thank you.
You mentioned about being on the well water instead of the surface water, and I was just curious how, I have some feedback on how the aquifer survived or hitting it for a while there.
I'll have to get back to you on that. You know, obviously with the floodwaters, when they come, they come and they move fast. An aquifer storage, from a natural standpoint, requires saturation, right? It requires that that water hit, slowly work its way down, but when it's sheet flowing, it doesn't do as much. We have had considerable amounts of rain, so we'll have that, we'll bring public works back next time, and I'll get you a good answer for that.
It just seemed like we might learn something from, you know, doing that.
We certainly will, and we have.
Are you talking ASR or?
No, no, I mean.
Just the aquifer levels themselves.
Aquifer levels, if we were, we weren't putting any back in the ASR while we were taking out the well.
If Stuart's not already walking down here with the answer, I'll make sure that he does before the workshop is over, how about that? Yes!
We know how to get you here.
Wow.
May I do for you?
Water questions.
Sorry, watching upstairs, obviously, so the question, if, there is a slight delay, so you may have asked another question while I was, while I was trotting down here. But the wells have done very well for us, they're actually recovering very well right now, we're not using them and we are storing in ASR, so it's hard to tell exactly how much groundwater we're actually, new groundwater we're getting other than what we're putting in. So they are responding very well to us not being on, on well water, and the aquifer is recovering well. The rains have helped, too.
Was a pretty major drawdown then while we were on.
Yes, sir, yeah, they were, we saw a big, a big portion of the drawdown, probably within the week to two weeks of us first turning them on, and then they stabilized, thank the Lord, because it was going down very quickly. But that's why we got so quick, worked with TIDIM and everybody else to get our water treatment plant back up online so we could get back on, on that surface water. Surface water's been really good, it's nice and clean, the river washed itself out during the flood, and so there, we don't have any of those lingering effects from long-term flooding that you may see in other cities closer to the coast where it, where it kind of just stacks up and the water gets stagnant, or it actually gets cleaner with the, with the flood, so.
Brenda, do you have anything?
No, I'm good.
Anybody else? All right, what's next on this item? Anything?
That's it, sir.
All right. Go to 2B, Kerr Economic Development Corporation and Kerr Together update, starting with.
Mayor, council, thank you. Todd Bach, Kerr EDC, here to report today on some business retention and expansion within the community. Kelly and I, if I haven't reported this to you already, had a visit with KMM, and KMM is flourishing, doing well, doing well with their employees, having a lot of success in adding employees to their workforce. Let Kelly and I know that as their contract with Boeing has continued to grow, they've got projected growth all the way throughout 2026, and we'll be keeping Kelly and I in the loop as to what their potential capital improvement projects needs are, what their equipment needs are, what their growth and expansion within the facility may be. So we had a really great visit following up with them. Quick update on MegaCrete. MegaCrete is still in their TCQ process of getting their air quality permit. Spoke with them, I believe it was on Monday, and they're getting together to have an internal meeting towards the end of this month, which I'll get a report back sometime, probably mid-October, on the status of how that is going for them, and still hoping to have a groundbreaking, obviously, sometime in 2026. Wanted to let everyone know, too, thanks to Kelly and a lot of others and TIDIM, we were able to get the SBA deadline moved from September 4th to September the 28th, and would strongly encourage all individuals and businesses to please take the opportunity and go meet with SBA and fill out their applications, see what you qualify for, see the terms of the agreement. As we know, we had the Governor's Small Business Disaster Fair on the 28th of August here in Kerrville, the first of its kind ever that the governor brought to town, was the first disaster relief fair that's ever been put up. Those type of business fairs happen throughout the year, we've hosted several of them here in, in Kerrville, but that was the first one, very well attended, just under 300 people attended, and was received very well, over 20 vendors, which gave people the opportunity to go down, the different vendors that offer different types of relief, from tool replacement to monetary relief. types of release from tool replacement to monetary relief. And again, SBA was there to represent SBA. Also wanted to make note that Kelly and I have had, within the last probably three weeks, five potential new businesses that are looking at relocating or actually new businesses looking to move into the Kerrville Kerr County area that we've been visiting with, which is a great sign to see some activity along the fronts of new business looking at moving into town. And also want to give a great thank you to K-Pub, Mike Whitler and his crew helped me out to help Fox Tank out of a jam that they were in. You probably didn't notice, but where 27 and 534 come together, if you've ever looked at those Windstream power lines, uh, Windstream internet lines have prevented for some time Fox Tank for using that route out in order for them to ship their sole tanks out. They've had to use an alternative route, which caused their bids to come in much higher than competitors. Would like to announce that we got that moved and height risen and Fox Tank is aware of it. So now that will adjust their bid and their process to help them more competitive in the market when they come to sell their wares. So thank you and, and K-Pub handled that for us and Windstream participated. We had a little bit of delay, obviously, on July 4th, took a lot of those trucks that were out working out in Hunt, delayed us a little bit, but thank you to K-Pub for that. Also would like to give you an update on Kerr Together Long-Term Recovery Group. We are still in the process of putting that group together as Michael made mention and our speaker made mention. Very appreciative of all of the local volunteers that have stepped up to be a part of that organization. We have approximately now plus or minus 16 different working groups that are becoming active. Some of them are not fully active yet. Today, we had our first nine-member board meeting this afternoon, which was a, a, a big milestone for us to get that accomplished and, and very pleased with the work that's going on. I know within those organizations, we've got priorities from the county, the city and mainly our citizens giving us priorities and giving us orders and what they want to see addressed and, and actively seeking projects and funds and donations for those funds and funding sources for those projects. So that's going really well. And would like to report back too that at the onset, when Kerr Together started, Kerr EDC along with the Chamber and Kelly Hagemeier put together a quick business survey that we were able to get out directly to the local businesses all the way from Comfort all the way to Far West Kerr. And we had, I believe to date, it was 148 were the initial surveyed of various needs, direct and indirect effects of the flood. From that, we've done a post-survey back out to those 147 that we had. We've had 67 responses, which has kind of given us an idea. The data is still coming in. I don't have it all compiled, but giving us an idea of where they were on July 4th and thereafter and where they are here approximately eight weeks past the event to give us an idea of where our business community stands. We've also taken, what we're doing is, is taking data since obviously we didn't have one central data system to collect this. We've been working with the Centerpoint Alliance and the Comfort Chamber and West Kerr Chamber and Hill Country Preservation Society. All of these little groups in Ingram had their own working surveys and data collections. We're compiling all their data collection into our data collection and then we'll go through and mine that data and then come up with what we would deem to be some potential solutions for those directly affected and indirectly affected as a result of the floods.
Are you still collecting volunteer hours through the Kerr Together website?
Good question. I will say at brushover, the answer to my knowledge is no, that we are not scanning the QR code and I would assume that a meeting we had the day would potentially fall under, under that. I, I, I did not know that it was, I didn't know we were still active in doing that, but I, I will say that no, our, our internal group has not been doing that.
Okay.
We'll get clarification on that to see if that.
Thank you.
We'll get with TDM. We, we met with them today too and I'll get, I'll get clarification if that's still, if they're still reconciling that or still taking.
Thank you.
Any questions for Todd?
Well, I just thought, would you mind sharing with everyone what I asked you about, folks that would still need to get into their homes and what you gave me regarding the rebuild.org? If you would share that with folks who, you know, don't, don't get the answer from KerrTogether.com, but need the answer to, I think it's rebuildkerr.org?
Yes, ma'am. And, and that is the website of the Community Foundation. The Community Foundation has, they have what's called connective. They have their, an internal needs assessment survey. Urge everybody, under every circumstance, under every need to go to rebuildkerr.org and fill that assessment out. As the Community Foundation puts out, and they put out their four pillars of support, housing was one of those that they stood up first and committed $40 million to funding housing needs, relocation, down payment assistance, rental assistance, RV repair, RV replacement is within that first pillar that they have released. How you go about getting on that list, if you're in need is go to Kerr, to, sorry, rebuildkerr.org and fill out that needs assessment. They have case managers that are going through that data and will be contacting you by phone and making sure where you're at. We have on-the-ground case managers all throughout the community, which are our neighbors that are, that are helping us do that. There also is going to be some additional assistance to help manage those cases as well too. And that will connect that unmet need to a need, whether it be a housing need at the moment right now or through the Unmet Needs Long-Term, Kerr Together Long-Term Recovery Group, which is head up by Beth Palmer. We can get that to Beth and Beth can work all of the channels that we've identified for all of those unmet needs, specifically to the housing. When the housing, when the $40 million commitment to housing was announced, Kerr Together Long-Term Recovery Group, we have a housing and construction group led by Mr. John Dunn out of the Hunt area. And there were identified as two nonprofits to participate in the sourcing of those funds. One was the Habitat for Humanity. The other one was the Hunt Preservation Society, both serving one on the western end of Kerr County and the eastern end of Kerr County. That process and the matrix to that is still being put together today, working with a group of local builders that want to participate and commit to helping the rebuild and getting people back in their homes, along with our local banking community that has been meeting as well to provide the services that they would have to help process those funds from the Community Foundation to the Hunt Preservation Society, or if you're on the west, or if you're on the east, to the Habitat for Humanity, that would then fund the contractor that has been assigned to the individual who is in need of the house, who has a vetted contract, who has the job assessed, and then we'll have the materials assessed and then we'll go to one of our local banking partners and then we'll distribute those funds out to the contractors based on an inspection process. So that is the current process. As everything else we go through daily, that could change, but currently, right now, that is the process that's being implemented and put into place. And don't have a date or a time when we'll start literally swinging the hammers, but I know everybody from the foundation all the way to the contractors and the banks and the individuals are, are helping and assisting that, that process and putting that together.
Anybody else? Thank you, Todd. Thank you for all you're doing. Thank you for all you and Kelly and, and the Chamber are doing.
Appreciate it. They got a big, got a big army. I think we're up to about, in our Long-Term Recovery Group, we've got to be pushing 75 to 80 volunteers.
Good, thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Next item is 2C, proposed budget and tax rate for fiscal year 2026, starting with Ms. Barron.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. So a lot of follow-up here just based on budget presentation that we brought to you back in August. Just want to go over a few things and answer questions that you may have. So first, talk a little bit about sustainability and we talked a lot about the shifts that we made in the sustainability portion of the budget due to just the sheer uncertainty. I think the timing of the disaster, you know, really had a lot of impact on some budgetary decisions because of the time, the 105 days that people have to file the exemptions for, for lost value. So still working through that process, but I do want to point out, you know, we did do some reductions here and might actually call them deferrals. We're hopeful that if we were conservative enough on our property tax calculations and revenues, that this will come back to be hopefully better than we anticipated and we could bring some of these back to you as a mid-year budget adjustment. But needing to be balanced and needing to be super conservative and not wanting to miss those revenue streams, we just were super conservative on that. So we've talked through these things before, but I just wanted to point out a few things on the sustainability measures, just historically, just to kind of bring it back to light so you can also look at the processes that we've gone through over the past few years to make sure we're focusing on these areas. So this is just a look at general asset replacement and you're looking at the original budget in green here and then the actual activity in blue. And what this is, is transfers from the general fund, so from M&amp;O over to the asset replacement fund, which remember is also part of the general fund, but separated for budgetary purposes for transparency. So really this is used to purchase new or replacement equipment, any kind of larger assets that we might need. And then ideal funding level, you know, we've had this committee that's been in the works about three years, has worked through this tenure plan and we know that our need is about a million five to a million eight every year to realistically replace aging assets and to keep assets flowing so that those folks out there can have the tools they need to do their job. So estimated beginning fund balance for '26 going into next year is 1.4 million. That does include some transfer from the general fund and from interest revenue. And then if we were to fund the tax notes, this, that amount would be deposited into this fund because it's specifically used for asset replacement. So just giving you that too. I think the, the thing to remember or to point out here is we have a expenditure budget of about 1.5 million for fiscal year '26. And so at the end of the year, we would have about $585,000. So we already have some committed things for '27 of $260,000. So you can see how quick that gets eaten up and why it's important that we maintain the sustainability stream here for this so we can, you know, keep carrying on the plan that we've been working on for the last three or four years. This one's a little bit simpler. So if you remember, in '24, we created the General Facility Fund and really that was a set aside fund that we wanted to put a pot of money aside and really start focusing on the facilities throughout the city so that we're not running into needing to replace, you know, large HVAC units and making major repairs to facilities that we're having to come up with last minute. So we put the sale of some property into this fund. We also did an interest revenue transfer of a million dollars into that fund and then we have a proposed transfer also of interest this year of another $200,000. So we figure we'll have close to 1.5 at the end of this year and then we have a little bit of transfer going in there. Yes, so that's just sitting there right now for facility needs. This one's a little bit trickier, but I thought it was important to talk to you about. So as we talk about long-term plans and tenure plans and those kind of things, it's really hard, as you can see, to draft a tenure plan when we don't have some real consistency in budgeted transfers. So again, your blue is your budgeted transfers and your green is what we actually did. So we've relied heavily on surplus revenue from one year to the next. So if you look at 2020, that was COVID year, sales tax was about a million and a half better than we anticipated. If you remember, we did a reduction in sales tax and a whole lot of reductions anticipating that things were going to fall short. It came back better, so we went ahead and moved that money over to asset replacement. And then those others, so fiscal year '22, same story, just better than, than budget. So we're always relying on surplus instead of actually addressing the need as we go along. But do keep in mind, general capital projects fund is funded in other ways. So that's where anytime we issue debt for large capital projects, excuse me, that money goes there. We've talked about the interest revenue that we've earned in the last few years since we've received public safety bonds and so we've really tried to capitalize on that. We've earned about 4.3 million in interest revenue and so that has built a fund balance over there. But again, as we've gone through workshop and those things, we've kind of talked about earmarking that for facility use in the future as we're growing our facility needs and some of our other facilities are starting to age. So just want to give you a quick update, but I think the point here is not budgeting for this growth in this fund is just not sustainable and using interest revenue that as our cash flow decreases, as the large projects are dropping off and then also interest in the market is changing, that using interest revenue is not a sustainable way to fund this either. So just wanted to kind of highlight that one. Okay, before we go to talk about tax notes, does anybody have any questions on sustainability or any adjustments we made just per the budget presentation in August? That has not changed.
Anybody?
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay. So talk about tax notes real quick and I'm happy to answer any questions on these. We'll say that Ann will be here also at the six o'clock meeting, so if you have any specific questions about market or anything like that, she'll be here to help us with that. So as we talked, we're proposing to issue $700,000 in tax notes to specifically fund police vehicles. And so the idea here was as we start to defer the transfers to the asset replacement, how do we stay on track and keep the momentum going that we have built over the last few years without really having an impact to anything? So a couple of things to point out, there's no impact to the tax rate here. So think about this more as like a car loan. So regardless of whether we pay for it out of maintenance and operations through a transfer, we pay for it out of INS, it's still property tax supported because that's where those, those funds, both funds are supported by property tax. So no impact to the tax rate here. As we talk about this on the next slide, you'll see that purchasing larger assets like this with tax notes is becoming more and more common. And as we talk through peer groups and things like that, and it's not necessarily for lack of planning, but more due to inflationary factors and this year with even more pressures due to the uncertainty that we're just facing right now. So we currently use short-term financing through lease purchase option on the M&amp;O side in asset replacement. This is, will actually be a better rate for us than utilizing that structure. So regardless of, of like I said, where we fund it, it's still going to be property tax supported. It's just a matter of whether the council has an appetite to proceed with this. The proposal, if we do this, will be closing date of September 30th. I think it's interesting that we talked about, you know, 4.75, very conservative interest rate, just based on what the market is doing. We got four bids back on this and you can see the banks listed there. Every bank that has a local location was asked to submit a bid as well as some larger banks that we've done business with before on these kind of issuances. And the bank and trust came back with the best rate at 2.99, which is unheard of in this market for, for odd alone. So we were really happy about that and that's actually below the lease purchase option if we were to go through the route that we use now. So a couple of things. So we continue to discuss and we've talked about that, the general fund's inability to, to sustain the asset replacement needs as we just talked about on the, on the earlier slides for the historical data. So when you really look at it, prices have leveled. So if you're on the purchase side like we are and you're seeing these larger items flow, we're not seeing the 20, 30% increases like we were seeing in '21 and '22. Things are more readily available for now, you know, barring, we've talked about potential tariffs and those kind of things. But I wanted just to give you some examples. So police Tahoe on the road is about $60,000 in 2022. This year, we just paid $100,000 for the same, same vehicle. So same Tahoe outfitted, ready to go. So ideally, we're replacing those every five or six years and Police Department has done a really good job as we've worked through this process of identifying what their needs are, how those vehicles can be rotated to last maybe seven years by, do we move them from patrol to admin or admin to patrol? And, and how do we do that to make sure we're getting the most use out of those? And then slowly growing our fleet so that we're not having the, so each, each officer does not have their own vehicle assigned. So they share vehicles. So the more vehicles we share, the more miles we put on them. And so just kind of looking forward as we're doing this long-term plan, how, what is going to make the, the best impact long-term for the city? So I went ahead and gave you some other comparisons there just so that you would know. Ambulances, $140,000 more than they were, you know, three years ago. And even on, even on trucks and things as simple as mowers, you know, we're seeing 25 to 30% increases. Now, as I said, we're not seeing those jumps now, but just relatively speaking, when you talk about planning, it's hard to plan for that kind of an increase when you're using just general fund money. So we'll follow your lead on, on whatever you would like to do with this. This is an option. If the, the appetite is not here to do this, then we would go back and revisit our asset replacement and see what we absolutely have to do in '26. And then, you know, as I said, we're hopeful that we've been conservative on property tax, that we can bring back a budget amendment in December for discussion for those assets. Any questions on tax notes? Okay. So I'm going to talk through property tax and then Dalton is going to have some input here as well. So this one, we're happy to answer questions on as we go through this. I wanted to provide this first slide to let you know what our original proposal was. So this is what came to you and was filed in the 731 budget. So you can see there in yellow, that is the disaster rate. I think it's important as we continue to talk about this, the 8% is 8% over the no new revenue rate. It's not over last year and it's not a dollar amount. It is a percent of the rate. So that gets tax, property tax and rates get really confusing when you start mixing revenue and, and rates. revenue and rates. So at the direction of council, we, the resolution that was adopted in August when we presented the budget was to consider the rate of 5711, which is the disaster rate. So basically, what that does is only change the maintenance and operation rate. The debt rate does not change. So this would include a maintenance and operations rate of 4305. So I wanted to show you this just so you can see it relatively speaking in comparison to '24, '25, and then also to the disaster versus the non-disaster rate. So again, conservative estimates, if you remember, typically, we use 98.5 or 99% collection rate when we look at the levy each year, when that comes into us from Kirkad. We worked through that process. Just really do because of the uncertainty of this event happening in July and us having to file the budget on July 31st. Not a big window for trying to make a decision about what those loss values will be. So we use 97.5%. And then we also applied a $65 million estimated lost value based on Kirkad's estimates to that. So that's about $280,000 on the general fund side. So if that loss comes back better than that, well, then we will have more revenue than that. If it comes back worse, you know, we've built in a little bit of buffer on the collection rate. And then also remember that we, you know, do have some half pays, and we also are really watching closely what that collection rate looks like as people may be having some difficulty with property taxes for one reason or another, if they're allowed to pay quarter pays and those kinds of things. So it will still come in. It will just present some cash flow issues. So we think that conservative method is really the best way to go. So estimated general fund revenue at the disaster rate, 13 million, 13,667. And then estimated general fund revenue at the voter approval rate is 13.3 million. I do want to point out something here. The proposed budget is the proposed budget as we filed it. These are updated numbers. It's immaterial, it's about $12,000 difference. But we did go out after your, we came back last time and got updated rolls from Kirkad because I wanted to kind of start tracking on how many exemptions were turned in. So there wasn't enough difference for us to really say, as of even 826, that it had a major impact. There's still a lot of exemptions that are not filed. So these are the most recent numbers that I can give you right now. So we're estimating a difference between the disaster rate and the voter approval rate of 5579, about $337,000 on the general fund side. So.
Ask a question real quick?
Yes, please.
105 days to file exemption starts when, started when?
The day that the governor filed the disaster. And so the 18th of October is the date. That's actually on a Saturday, I believe. So the date is going to be 10/20. So still a good period of time. So I think by the middle of November or the first part of December, we should be able to have an updated roll and bring you back just some more solid numbers based on the levy, the adjusted levy at that time. Okay, what else? So another thing that I want to point out, in the original budget, we reference average homestead value. Of course, last minute change to the way that we have to present a taxpayer impact statement. So I did make the change to reflect median homestead value. There was very little impact to that. But basically, what this is, is comparing multiple levels. So this is a new publication that we have to post whenever we're going to have a discussion on a budget. And so I thought as we talk about cost to the taxpayer, that this was important to bring this up at this meeting. And so you can see, using the median value for 2024 tax year, which is fiscal year '25's budget, about the average, or the, sorry, the median homestead value of 306. And then in this year, the median homestead value of about $337,000. So those numbers there, if we were to adopt the 5711, would be an increase of about $200 over last year. And then if you were to adopt the 5711, that's about a $44 difference compared to the adoption of the 5579 that was originally proposed. That's for a year on a homesteaded property at median value.
So you're saying there'd only be a $44, $45 increase?
On an average homestead between the originally proposed 5579 and the disaster rate of 5711.
And that's per year?
It would be for fiscal year '26. But then you can also see the comparison for the 2024 tax year. So this year's budget that we're currently in, at the same rate, would be about $211 at, if we had 5711.
Say that again?
So if you look at this year that we're in right now.
Right.
Given the median home value of $306,000, your tax bill's right at $1700 on a homesteaded median property value. So if we took the median homestead value on that same home this year, which is about $337,000 because of the increase.
Okay.
At 5711, you have about a $211 difference compared to last year.
Okay.
So I gave you both comparisons, compared to last year and then compared to the disaster rate compared to the originally proposed rate of 5579.
With the average tax bill.
Correct.
For the, for homestead, where someone's taxes are not frozen, where someone's value has not declined because of damage to the flood.
Correct. $211.
About $211.
Correct, compared to the year that we're in.
Seventeen and a half dollars per month.
Correct, 200.
About 50 cents a day.
If you were to use the current rate compared to 5711. Okay, July 5th was the date that government declared disaster. So 10/18 is the deadline, so 10/20 would be the final date to file the exemption.
And our problem, if I understand it correctly, and I may not understand it correctly, is we do not know exactly how many properties within the city limits are going to file that they have had damage. We don't know.
No, sir. I think if this event had been in February or March, we would have a much more solid basis for providing these numbers because those exemptions would have been filed.
If it were March, I wouldn't have any hair left.
Same, sir.
These marginal costs, for those who are not, or taxes are not frozen, for those taxes who are not a damaged property, aren't theirs going to go up more than this or is it?
No, this is looking at the median homestead value. So if you use a median homestead value, you know, assuming all things are equal on those homesteads, you know, we can't track every exemption, you know, some may be partial. Yeah, but if you're using apples to apples, your 24 value on median value was that 306,000. Same home median value this year, $337,000. The difference is about $211 if all those things are even compared to this year's tax rate to the disaster rate.
And many things go into the difference of that appraisal.
Yes, sir.
But the city of Curville does not do those appraisals.
Yes, sir. We just use the.
Our, Currie County Appraisal District does those appraisals. They're separate from the city.
Yes, sir.
We have no control of those appraisals.
No, sir.
Some people don't understand that. I'm not sure I understand all of it. A lot of discussion in our community has been made about this tax rate and how it will affect particularly young people hoping to buy a home. I think the problem is that the value of the homes is rising rather quickly. The value of the homes is rising quicker than inflation, actually.
We've seen some, it is quicker than inflation right now at the current inflationary rate. We have seen some leveling in that. If you remember back 2019, 2020, 2021, we saw significant increases in property value after SB2 kind of got implemented. We were seeing 20% to 30%. Remember, there's some 10% caps and there's some other caveats to that as well. But we're, we've seen that almost leveled with what the increases were last year. So, but it is still lower, I mean, it's still higher right now than what inflation is.
And to some degree, young people buying a home, anyone buying a home, is affected by interest rates, which the city does not control. Although my first home, Miss Carroll, our interest rate was 14.5%. We thought we got a deal.
My mother tells me the same story. That's right.
Mayor, council, the other thing too, outside of the number side, you know, it's an economy piece. It's not necessarily a tax rate issue or even an appraisal issue. It's a supply and demand issue.
Right.
And across the state, there has been a significant, you know, decrease in supply of homes, which has caused the demand to go up. And so in 2020, 2021, you know, during that, during that time, when people were selling their homes $100,000 to $200,000 over market rate, that skyrocketed the comps across the board during that massive demand issue. So.
And this council and previous councils have been working rather hard to increase the supply.
Yes, sir. And we even see sometimes in some of the, you know, even though San Antonio is a larger metropolitan, supply and demand is supply and demand. And even some of those same homes that they're building, they're able to put those homes on the market rather quickly. And during the discussions of some of the attainable housing that we were having with council and the community, those homes were coming down by $50,000 to $60,000 per home of the same style, type, and design that we are looking at within the city of Curville.
So that stuff that I was supposed to be listening to in my economics class about supply and demand.
I was in the same boat, yes.
Has some effect in the real world. If I remember correctly, when this council and previous councils worked so hard to increase supply of housing, we had a lot of opposition to that.
Yes, sir.
I think from the same group that opposes things we're going to be discussing tonight. All right, any questions for Ms. Barron's on this slide or Dalton?
And real quick, Mayor and Council, kind of just to, you know, that's a lot of technical stuff that comes in. We try to, you know, simplify the tax rate as much as possible and the tax rate calculation. The state does not help us do a good job at that. So I want to try to get out the crayon and the big chief pad to help better understand all of this a little bit more as far as it comes to the disaster tax rate calculation. So as far as this budget is concerned, we budgeted at the 3.5% tax rate, which is the voter approval rate, which is the highest rate that city council can adopt a tax rate before it triggers an election per Senate Bill 2 in the 86 legislation in 2019. Council, after kind of the recommendation of staff, because y'all can approve a lower tax rate, you just cannot approve a higher tax rate. We recommended at least, you know, due to due diligence, we can, you know, study this and examine this and do an assessment to figure out what does the 8% disaster tax rate look like and how will that impact, you know, things going forward? So even though we've built this budget on the voter approval tax rate at 3.5%, and that is ultimately the budget that y'all would adopt, you know, later on in the regular meeting, if council chooses to go to the 8% tax, you know, disaster tax rate, that is okay. It does not impact the budget. We can come back to apply those funds in a budget amendment to whatever city council deems is necessary. We're not recommending recurring costs. But I want to really highlight, this disaster creates a lot of uncertainties, and I think we all are very aware of that. Not even just in the maintenance and operations side of things, but let me highlight that real quick. We have $65 million of estimated lost value with $71 million of new value. So even though our new value as of right now on the estimates outweighs it, and even though we're using the voter approval tax rate, the dollar for dollar is almost a net wash of what would be considered dollar for dollar on a tax rate generation or on a no-new-revenue tax rate. So because, and that's what the intent of the disaster, excuse me, the disaster tax rate is used for, to offset maintenance and operations costs. So we did not build that into the budget. We have that wash. What Julie was explaining is, is we don't know what those uncertainties are. We could see an increase in that lost value up to November, or sorry, up to October 20th as people file their exemptions. That could increase that lost value. As soon as it goes over $71 million of new value, we are now tapping into the general fund and maintenance and operations for city business to cover those disaster-related expenses, which then could impact, you know, more. Now, we do have a lot of deferred stuff that Julie was saying, not cuts, but deferments that we can kind of hold off for 90 days or even six months if we need to, with the hopes of building a conservative 97.5% collection rate versus our typical 99%. And so we've built some safety measures in there. And I think from a fiscally conservative and, you know, having good fiscal stewardship is doing exactly that. Fiscal stewardship doesn't necessarily mean cutting the rates and, you know, stripping services out of a community. It really is, how do we best use the funds to be fiscally responsible? And I think city council has done a great job at that, and I think staff has done a great job at portraying that. The other piece that we're not talking about outside of the disaster tax rate, which again can be used, is when we start looking at public assistance dollars, so anything that would be reimbursable, we will have a 25% match that we have to use. Now, there's a lot of things that we can use, and I know Councilmember Hughes had talked about the volunteer, or somebody did, about the volunteers, you know, and the logging the times. And all of that is critically important. Our teams are still logging the times. Anything that they're doing on any disaster-related stuff, so our parks and rec crews under J, everything that they do is logged as a project and logged as disaster time to include all of our equipment. All of that can be used for disaster or for the 25% disaster match. But just think, on a $20 million, you know, recovery effort, that's about $5 million that we would still have to tap into, whether that's through in-kind or other programs or services that we have to try to use. And, and that could be, you know, that could be used to offset some of that, or we have to use the fund balance or our contingency rainy day fund to do that. We did not factor any of those costs of the 25% into this maintenance and operations budget to include the disaster tax rate. So even though it seems like it's only $336,000, that's still a lot. That could cover overtime. That could cover anything and everything that could be used to offset any number of things, from disaster-related projects to non-disaster-related, you know, projects. We really have a lot of flexibility with it. One of the things we recommended during the work, or during the previous budget workshops, city council through ordinance could restrict that into a disaster contingency fund where we can, when we do have another disaster, whether it's a snowpocalypse, a wildfire, or any number of threats that, you know, that could cause risk in our city, even if it's hopefully, knock on wood, a much smaller level, we're gonna, we can use those funds, you know, for that. And we can even potentially put in some disaster contingency funds in the future. So, all that being said, there's so many uncertainties that we just, we have not realized, we just don't know, and every little bit counts.
It's a tough, a tough decision tree because so many things are still unknown. So many things are still unknown.
Yes, sir.
But this slide that you've got before us right now helps quantify to the average homeowner, the median homestead value, what the effect will be to them. Even if we go to the maximum, which is allowed by law. I've heard a lot of people are concerned that we're going to charge 8%. Somehow the tax rate will be 8%. And it's 8% of what exactly again?
The tax rate.
A tax rate, but only a portion of that tax rate.
So it's 8% over, the disaster rate calculation is 8% more than the no-new-revenue-maintenance-and-operations rate. So the 3987 that is our no-new-revenue-maintenance-and-operation rate, it's 8% over that instead of 3.5. That's voter approval.
And it's only the M and O portion of.
Only the, yes, sir.
4.5% more than 3.5.
Correct.
That's correct.
And also, I want to add another component to that. Even though city council, you know, if they choose to go to the disaster 8%, you could do that disaster rate, 8%, up to three years, or lost value comes back down to zero, whichever comes first. And so it gets a little complicated at that. But ideally speaking, this is the year that most people are going to file an exemption. And as that lost value starts coming down, then, you know, then in, you know, subsequent years, then ideally, that 8% would get hit, you know, hit more on those. But let me also make sure that everybody understands, this does not move the no-new-revenue rate in the future. As soon as the disaster tax rate comes, comes off, whether that's lost value or three years, that does, that tax rate has to go back to its original M and O or no-new-revenue rate. It does not move our new-new revenue rate like a voter-approved tax rate would.
Which is also good to know because a lot of people think, well, taxes never go back down.
Back down, and they will.
And by law, these have to go back down.
I have a question. The, we've had a settlement from the insurance company.
Yes.
And so what did we learn from that? So we had $5 million worth of coverage.
That's it, $5 million?
And, and so how much agony did they go over before they wrote the check for $5 million?
So for the insurance companies, nothing. That was pretty much the maximal allowable that they could issue on the $5 million. What we are doing is we are going back and kind of re-appropriating or designating what it is to make sure that it covers under the FEMA documents because in order for us to get public assistance and reimbursements, we got to align the paperwork. So they just kind of did general government on that. And we're now working with the IRP, which Kim could probably speak to that a little which Kim could probably speak to that a little bit more if you have more questions on it, but we're re-appropriating it to fit into projects for the disaster.
I'm just, my question is, I mean, did they, I mean, how deep did they go in to figuring out how much it was? Did they, they just got the five million and they gave up?
It was pretty much our maximum allowable, you know, under it. So they didn't, they did?
They did do inspections.
They did do inspections, they went out there and, but we don't have a?
They didn't give any numbers.
We don't have a set number on it yet. No, sir. And that's, and they're still working on that, that's going to take some time, but they just went to the maximum allowable, allowable, which basically just means that whatever those thresholds were, they were pretty confident that we were going to meet it at one time.
So it's probably quite a bit more than that.
Yes, sir.
They would have been, they would have been?
They would have nickled and dimed it.
They've been scratching and clawing.
Yes, sir.
Because they don't want to pay anymore, they have to.
Correct.
So it must be quite a bit more than five million.
Yes, sir.
And three hundred and thirty-six thousand, they're going to put a very big dent in that.
Notice in the audience, we have two former members of council, former mayor Todd Bach and former mayor Pro Tim, Kim Clarkson. You remember how stressful the budget process was? Now we're playing on legendary, you know? Having it during a natural disaster is, there's just so many things that, there's no way to nail down what our expenses are going to be. There's no way to know what the final tally will be.
It's not going to be small.
No, it's not.
There's no indication that it's going to be a small number.
I've got a question for Julie.
Please.
Julie, just on the screen that we're at right here, if you would do me a favor and just really dumb it down for me. So the two rings in purple, the five-seven-one-one, and the five-seven, or five-five-seven-nine, I come up with forty-five dollars difference between the two of those, not seventy.
Rounding error.
It's, well, forty-five dollars to some people makes a lot more difference than seventy-two dollars.
It's forty-four dollars. I don't know where you're getting forty, seventy-two, forty-four.
Well, you take nineteen-twenty-three and you take the, from the five-seven-one-one, you take the eighteen-seventy-eight, and that's forty-five dollars.
Right, and that's what it says.
Is that what it says?
The last bullet there, five-seven-one-one compared to five-five-seven-nine is forty-four dollars.
I thought you said seventy-two.
Oh, no. I probably was speaking too fast. Forty-four dollars, and if it's rounding, it could be forty-five, forty-four.
You dumbed it down for me, thank you.
There you go, forty-four dollars. You are correct, Jeff.
Right. I apologize, thank you.
No, no worries.
I just have one thing to say also. I think that Jeff makes a good point about, if this is something you do every day, but most people don't. And I've had to use my calculator more than I ever have in the last couple of weeks, just thinking about different scenarios, and also, are we planning and do we have already maybe on our website a way for any taxpayer to plug in their value, even if it's current and projected, whatever that could be, and know what the difference would be?
Yes, and I should have included the link here in our August meeting. I included a link for our balancing act, tax receipt tool.
Yes, right.
And so I can put that out. Again, we could actually put that in a, in a press release and get that out to folks. So what they can actually do is put in the value, the actual taxable value of their home, and it will generate an estimated tax bill for them, and it'll actually break it down according to the way our budget is allocated. It'll break it down to how their taxes are going, how much is public safety, how much is parks, how much is library, those kind of things. So happy to do that. We did present it, but we can bring that up again.
I thought I remembered that, and I think it'd be real helpful.
Yes, ma'am, we can do that.
All right, what's next? More from staff?
I think we have one more.
Group health?
Group health. So, we're tying this into the budget even though we don't have a formal discussion on the group health piece. This is kind of, as we discussed, kind of a management issue that we've been navigating really over the past, you know, four weeks. Really, after that Friday where a lot of the social media and stuff had kind of, you know, generated a lot of buzz, we went into kind of council. We had about a two-week period that we had to kind of navigate through a lot of the noise. And really just kind of for council's information, you know, what we've been kind of talking with the team is, you know, social media and the media is really about making statements. It's really unproductive. It's, you know, you don't really accomplish anything, you know, to the root and to the core of what we're trying to do. That next week, really open enrollment had started, and we've been talking about leadership, where leadership is about solutions. And I will say, I'm extremely proud of about ninety percent of our team. They have come to, come to the table, they have expressed their concerns, they have talked through this, sitting down with our teams and emails. We really have generated a lot of positive information. We've really been able to dive into the open enrollment process on really, you know, getting the information that we need to make some really informed decisions, and so I really appreciate the team really coming forward and having those productive conversations. And so with that, I want to go to this slide. I want to go to this slide and talk through a third option that we want to add and some of the reason why, why we're considering this and why we're doing this. I would say about fifty percent or more of our city, our city team has done a lot of research, an extensive amount of research. They've reached out to us, they've identified some areas. We've been working with Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and our broker. About a third of those folks have had no issues with the HMO rollout. Their providers were on it, and they haven't had any concern. I'd say about a third of those also, we've gotten a lot of information back that we have truly identified some fundamental issues with the rollout of this. To the, to the extent that Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and our broker ultimately could not even answer or explain some of this. Some examples are, the providers would be in the disruption report, and if you recall, ninety-four point nine percent of the providers were on the disruption report. So some of this, we were not going to be able to identify until we actually hit open enrollment and started having those discussions with folks. And as we started having discussions, some of those providers were on there. They would either be in the portal, or maybe they wouldn't be in the portal. They couldn't explain why they weren't in the portal, or there was a third-party billing issue, or there was a provider network group issue. So then they would find them in the portal, or maybe not. And then they would call their providers, and their providers were either unsure that they took it, or they would flat-out say that they didn't take it, even though they were part of the disruption report or in the network. In the discussions with Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and, and our broker ultimately, we couldn't get a lot of straight answers on, on the reason why. And so we've had some fundamental logistical issues to barriers of care. And so, real quick, let me explain barriers to healthcare, because that word was kind of thrown around a lot. When it comes to having to go to a PCP or a provider to get a referral to a specialist, that is not a barrier to healthcare, that is an inconvenience. And inconveniences are okay, though they're a part of our everyday life. When it comes to true barriers of healthcare, which I do think that we are in now, is if we can't even roll the HMO program out in a smooth, efficient, and effective way, we have now created a barrier to healthcare that is going to be put onto our HR team and having to navigate this over the next year, and it's going to be put onto our directors and our, and our teams potentially having to do this. And I, that is unacceptable to us, and we do take responsibility on that one, which is why we're, we're coming to council to kind of recommend this. This does not change the bottom line of the budget. It will increase because we are recommending adding the employee-only to this third plan, and I'll talk about this third plan a little bit. So it would be about another one hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. We will be able to absorb that and through the additional, the additional budgeted stuff on the healthcare budget plan, and we also do have the benefit trust if we need it, but as of right now, the bottom line does not change, we are able to absorb it. So number one question is, is well, why didn't we do this first? This wasn't an option first. About two weeks ago, when we started identifying some of these fundamental issues with the rollout of the HMO, we painfully and very directly went to our broker and to Blue Cross and said, we have issues. They couldn't address these issues, and we need a third plan that we can potentially look at and maybe roll out as an option. No matter what in healthcare, no matter what we do, whether it's raise the deductibles, whether it's change the plan, whether it's change the core plan, anything we do, it's going to create change. And so when we talked about, you know, absorbing, you know, the, the past twelve years of, of that cost, that's unheard of, and I think everybody knew that. Unfortunately, it hit all at once. And I think, you know, we, I as city manager and speaking for the city manager's side, we should have addressed that years before. And so now we're, we're kind of riding, right sizing that across the board. Unfortunately, our teams, you know, do get impacted by that, but again, I, I want to thank our teams for navigating this with us and working together with us. Even some of the ones on the noise, we still have gotten not a lot of information from them on making this decision. This was actually productive conversations that we've had with employees that have communicated this with us and have addressed those, those issues. So I wanted to kind of point that out because I do think that's important, because this is about four weeks of, of information that we've really had to, to dive into. So I want to thank our teams for their patience with this. So with this plan, it is a Blue Choice PPO plan, which is the exact same plan that we have now. The fundamental differences of the structure are the deductibles are higher, so it would go from forty-five-hundred to eight thousand. On the individual, it will go from seven thousand out-of-pocket to ninety-two-hundred, so about a twenty-two-hundred-dollar difference on the out-of-pocket, which is, in my opinion, one of the most important pieces is the out-of-pocket coverage. For the employee-plus-family, it would go from the three-ten, which is the buy-up PPO plan, down to two-thirty-six, which is about a fifty-one percent increase off of the original one-fifty-six, which has been that number for twelve years. And it's slightly diff, or slightly higher, about forty-ish, forty-ish, forty-four dollars from the one-ninety-two to the two-thirty-six. So twenty-four percent increase on, on the HMO, which was the original budgeted amount, and, and it'd go up about, it's about fifty-one. So split the baby on that, that's kind of the midway plan. We did run some numbers on it, so on this alternate plan, if you will, we would recommend this to be the preferred plan. We will still keep the HMO there as kind of a buy-down plan, because again, we have about a third of our, our team that has had no issues with that, and we don't want to remove those options if they so choose. And, and we still would leave the buy-up PPO plan for those that may know that they hit their deductibles. Out of the city, I wanted to kind of talk through the deductible piece, because when we talk about deductibles, people get kind of spun up on those and what those mean. We have about thirty-three employees that typically hit their deductibles or their out-of-pockets, you know, each year, or at least the last year. We have about twenty spouses that hit it, hit it every year, and we have about ten on the children, you know, plan. So really spouses comprised of about a third of our, of our plan, not uncommon for other, for other entities. You know, typically the spouses can be some of the highest premiums, which again, or highest claims, which do drive the cost of, of insurance up. Our loss ratio is one hundred and ten percent, therefore our, our claims are going to go up. That is about a seventeen-hundred-and-eighty-dollar difference on the family plan from the plan that we are wanting to implement to the buy-up PPO. So for perspective, if somebody does not hit their deductible typically on average, if they happen to have a bad year and something happened, it would be about a five-hundred-dollar difference on their, on their out-of-pocket cost, because they're saving seventeen-hundred dollars on the front end by doing that. If they apply that on the PPO and they set that money aside, then if they do hit their out-of-pocket, even though it's a ninety-two-hundred-dollar out-of-pocket, it would be about a five-hundred-dollar delta on that. For those that know that they're going to hit their deductibles, in this case, it may be better to, you know, to get that, the buy-up plan. Again, it's still under market rate, you know, for what we're doing. City is still paying in the Hill Country, the top, the top dependent contributions, and across sixty-two other cities that we did within a survey, we are the top sixteen as far as dependent coverage. Just to kind of also point out some of the information that we've gotten, you know, throughout this, this time, is we do have some, you know, some employees here, you know, within some leadership roles, or just employees here in general, but some within the leadership roles, that their spouses do work for, you know, either Ingram ISD or Curville ISD or other, you know, you know, political subdivisions, if you will, that do offer a hundred percent of employee, yet they still are on the family plan, where if their spouse, for example, would be on that, their employer's plan, they could go with the children-only plan, which would be significantly cheaper, even on the buy-up, by almost half. So there's some strategy that some of these families could use. Some of the folks have talked to us, others have not, but I will say over ninety percent have communicated with us, and we've been trying to work with them on that. But I wanted to point that out because we have identified, especially in the smaller, smaller communities, you see this more, you know, the families work, you know, work where they live, and, and we did identify some of those within the school districts alone that do offer a hundred percent of employee, but they offer zero percent on the dependent, yet most of them are on the family plan here with us, which shows that it's still a good plan. With that, I, I will take any questions or concerns that you may have. The goal would be to get an email out to our employees this evening or first thing tomorrow morning, and have it open on our employee navigator by eight AM tomorrow is the goal. And then that way, they can change and update their plans accordingly, and we will keep it open until the nineteenth, which is kind of our drop-dead deadline to make sure that we get, HR has, can input payroll and, and all the deductions and everything out of it.
Dalton, have you introduced this plan to the employees prior to rolling it out tomorrow?
Yes, ma'am, great question. I meant to bring that up. So I made a really terrible decision and met with every single city employee in a week. I will not do that again, I will spread it out over two weeks. So I've actually met with about ninety percent of our city staff and have sat down with each department directly. And even though this was very early on, I was able to talk through the hypothetical of if we did, you know, run this out, what that would do. I've had a lot of great feedback from, from everybody. It's not perfect, we know that, but this gives us an opportunity to really address the healthcare issues and, and some reform, deal with Blue Cross, Blue Shield, work through, you know, through the RFP process, and really get creative in the healthcare world, because everybody's, you know, feeling this, and so we can improve it. But yes, ma'am, we have met with well over ninety percent, and those that I have not met with have communicated through their directorship on some of these, but we have had good, good feedback on this, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Comments, questions?
Just say it was what you wanted all along, really, is for the, the communication to happen.
Yes, ma'am.
And to be able to come in and sit down and really listen and talk and make notes. So finally we got there, so glad.
Yes, ma'am, and you?
Thanks for doing that.
And I will say publicly, you know, one of the things that I expressed to our team, you know, something we could have done better, all excuses aside, all disaster aside, you know, this has nothing to do with the noise. The noise is a moot point for me. As long as we are truly taking care of our employees, that is what matters. And the one thing that I will say that we can do better and different, you know, next year going forward, is, is we can communicate more effectively better, and that's something that, that I take responsibility on, and we will make sure that we involve our, our team a little bit better, and we will communicate both with council and with our team, you know, as things change. But the one thing that we are managing expectations on is insurance costs will go up. And, and, and as we navigate this, we will continue to make sure that we do it the best possible way so we can still offer amazing benefits to our team.
Well, you know?
Give me a second.
To play off that, everybody that I have talked to regarding insurance, their deductibles are high, their premiums go up every single year, every year, no matter what. And so by absorbing those increases like we've done for the last twelve years, it hurt us. And now, our employees need to understand that moving forward, there's going to be an increase, more than likely, every year. And poor Kim, who does most of the negotiating, I know last year it was, she, she had to get the rate down, I think they tried to go up forty-nine percent.
We had, we've had a thirty-five percent increase since two thousand and twenty-four, to include this year.
Yes, so, so, I mean, I commend you for keeping these rates still in the industry as low as, as I've been able to, to, to see. And I've asked a lot of people, what do you pay on your insurance premium? And it's, oh, you know, somewhere between three and five hundred, and one was even six hundred dollars every two weeks on their insurance premium. So for us to have a, a plan with an option where the cost is two hundred and thirty-six dollars and forty-five cents, I think we should be counting our blessings for that. And I know you're going to be heavily negotiating next year to keep that rate down.
Yes, ma'am, and, and, you know, again, Kim has been instrumental in it. You know, I come from a healthcare background prior to going into public admin, so we've both been able to tackle, you know, this. You know, yes, timing sucked, you know, and we don't, we don't discount that, timing has sucked for a lot of things, but we will continue to work towards, you know, the positive. I will say that, I, I will say that beyond an overwhelming majority of our team understands that, and I want to communicate that on behalf of our team, you know, especially having met with them over the last week. So thank you, counsel, for understanding as well.
Mr. Harris?
I want to first say thank you to Kim and Dalton. There was, like you said, there was a lot of social media going on, there was actually a petition that was going on that was demanding y'all's resignation or that we terminate both of y'all.
Getting mine.
That was totally uncalled for. The petition was on, up here the other night, and it said, we've decided to take that off. I reached out to Kim during all of this to try to get a little bit more information because the grass is always greener on the other side. Kim, thank you for giving me this report, because there are five greener pastures right around us that pay for the employee, and they don't pay a single percent for spouses or kids. So that grass is not greener. There is one that pays more than we do for the spouse, but they pay less for the children and the family plan. We pay more than anybody else. So, Kim, I know that you've done your due diligence on this since I've been on council, heck, since I was on city insurance with my wife, was an employee with the city.[1744.84] with the city. So thank you for what you've done and what you continue to do. Dalton, thank y'all both for trying to get this other option out there for him. And I know that you and I've talked, and y'all are already gonna start looking for other options next year.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to say thank y'all and apologize that y'all were the brunt of everything when y'all were trying to take care of our employees.
You know, I appreciate the apology, but, you know, it's, it's part of the job. You know, it's, it's something that we do have to deal with, you know, and, and again, I want to thank those employees that were able to have a productive conversation. That really helped us be able to make an informed decision where we can bring something viable to y'all this evening, so.
Other comments on this? What's next? Anything?
Uh, I think that, questions or comments?
You've answered a lot of them, yeah.
Good. All right. We're gonna have a city council meeting in about thirty minutes, so I'm gonna go ahead and turn this workshop at five-thirty.